Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Monday, May 4 meeting of the City Council. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Counselor Kane.
Present.
Counselor Crowell. Counselor DeBarna.
Present.
Counselor Harris. Counselor Mahoney. Counselor Mahoney. Counselor McCarthy.
Present.
Counselor Calmucci. Counselor Phelan.
Present.
President Liang.
Present.
Uh, Counselor Harris is on. I'm sorry I was.
Counselor Harris is on. Counselor Mahoney?
Present.
Great. Thank you, Madam Clerk. And now, given the current circumstances regarding your wave, uh, the Pledge of Allegiance, but if you could all just join me in a moment of silence to honor all of the women and men serving here and abroad, uh, but in addition to that also to take a additional moment of silence for all of our first responders and all of the essential workers, um, that are on the front lines during this pandemic. Thank you. Madam Clerk, if you could now please read the open meeting law?
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised to sexually recordings with transmissions are being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed to acknowledge them permissible.
Thank you. And in accordance with Governor Charles D. Baker's March 10, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, the Quincy City Council is holding this city council meeting via remote conferencing services and it is being aired on Quincy Access Television, QATV, Channel QATV 9 Government Access. Um, Madam Clerk, with that, first item on the agenda, please?
First item is a COVID-19 update from Health Commissioner Ruth Jones.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner, can you hear us?
I can. Thank you. Can you hear me?
We can. So I thought was that if you could go ahead and provide us an update, I'll then open it up to my colleagues with any questions for you.
Sure. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, councilors, uh, for having me again. Um, so as of the end of today, we have 885 total cases. Of those 885 cases, 371 have recovered, uh, and we have a total of 80 deaths. Uh, to give you a little, um, bit of some statistics, um, on Quincy, we, um, have the average age of our positive cases at 57, the average age of our fatal cases at 81, uh, 55% of female, 43% are male, uh, 30% of positive cases are from nursing homes and assisted livings, and 70% are not. Uh, our infection rate has decreased. We are seeing a decrease in the amount of cases that we're getting. We're still busy, but, uh, if you look back at March 30th, we had a 583% increase in cases, uh, that now we're down to a 20% in- increase in cases. Today, we had 11 new cases where back in March, we were, uh, 20, 30, even 40 cases a day. So we have definitely seen a decrease in the amount of positive cases. Um, we're not out of the woods yet, but we, we do see our infection rate, um, coming down a bit. When you look at Quincy as compared, uh, to other parts of the state, um, Quincy is 1.3% of total cases statewide. I mean, that's been pretty steady throughout from the beginning of, of, uh, the pandemic. 765 per 100,000 cases, uh, this was as of the state's report last Wednesday, um, and it compares to 865 per 100,000 cases as the statewide average. So we're below, um, the statewide average. Um, and if you look at other cities, um, Boston, uh, is 100 and, excuse me, 1,335 per 100,000. Lynn is 2,000 per 100,000. Brockton, 2,800, um, Malden, 1,100, and Braintree, 1,500. So we are, we are, um, below the surrounding cities and towns. The, um, we are, we are seeing some, some clusters, uh, in nursing homes. Uh, we have cases in all of our nursing homes in Quincy, um, but we have seen larger clusters in some of the nursing homes. Uh, today, if you haven't heard, um, I'm sure you will, that, uh, we have, uh, Walmart has voluntarily, um, agreed to close. They closed at 3:30 this afternoon. We've been working with Walmart, um, all through last week and, and today. Uh, I was concerned about the amount of cases, positive cases in employees. There's presently 11, um, positive cases that they've had. Some have recovered and gone back to work, but my concern was that we are seeing an increase in cases and an increase in people that, um, were, uh, contacts to cases and saying that they went into Walmart and, and then were not feeling well, um, shortly after that. Uh, so I've been, uh, talking with Walmart through the end of last week and, and today. Uh, my inspectors have been there every day. We had to work with them on some issues of, um, social distancing and crowd control. Uh, but today they agreed to voluntarily close. Um, one of those 11, um, employees, we just found out this afternoon, has died. Um, an elderly, um, woman that, uh, worked there has died. Um, so they agreed to close. They will disinfect and deep clean the entire store. Um, every employee, uh, will be tested and the store will not reopen until, um, they have enough negative, uh, confirmed negative employees to actually go in and work in the store. And they'll work closely with us, um, as these employees are tested and will, um, the results will come to us through, uh, the different test sites that these employees will go to. Um, Man at Health has stepped up to the plate to help, um, and, uh, try to have a close and convenient area for these employees to be tested because many of them, uh, don't have cars and, and can't get to, to Foxborough. So, um, hopefully that will be done in an orderly and, and timely manner, but the store will stay closed until the health department is satisfied that everybody's been tested and that the people working in the store, uh, are negative. Uh, and we will re-inspect. Our inspectors will go back in and re-inspect and make sure, um, everything is disinfected and cleaned and, and all the, um, appropriate, um, um, guidelines are being followed, um, so that when they do reopen, we should not hopefully have a problem with that. The other cluster that we're having, um, we have a cluster of cases that presently are from the United States Navy, Department of Defense, um, that are from a ship in Boston that's in, in Boston being repaired. Uh, they were staying at the Staybridge Hotel. Uh, these, uh, there was one, uh, initial case, and now we have, um, a total right now of 18 positive cases. Um, they are presently, uh, testing all of the crew, uh, which is about 47, 48 people. Um, the Man at, again, is doing, um, a, a large portion of the testing, and they are all quarantined, the entire crew, and, um, and the, actually, the medic that was, um, monitoring these people, um, also became ill. So, um, they're all being quarantined at Staybridge, um, hotel. The Staybridge staff has been, uh, briefed, um, by not only the Navy, but by the, uh, Vice President of Operations at Staybridge. Um, I spoke with them. Um, they have all the necessary PPE. They've all been tested, the staff, um, and have all tested negative, and there's no one else in the hotel. So the hotel is just being used as a quarantine and isolation, uh, site for, uh, the US Navy at this point. Um, on a better note, our Quincy Housing Authority buildings have done very well. In all our buildings, um, we have only a total of six cases that's spread out throughout Quincy Housing Authority. Um, we, uh, and, and that's not a high number. Um, so I think that they're doing a really good job there of, um, protecting the residents and making the residents aware of the necessary steps. And, um, we do have cases in, um, some of our assisted livings, um, that are being, uh, dealt with. Um, again, um, the nursing homes and the assisted livings are usually followed by the State Department of Public Health, but we also are included in that. And we have, um, daily updates with all of these facilities just to make sure that everybody is on the same page, doing what they're supposed to be doing, um, and if, seeing if we can improve any conditions that need to be improved. So that is kind of a synopsis of what's going on today. Um, I'm happy to take any questions from anyone.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and put it over to my colleagues, make sure that your microphones are unmuted. Um, if you want, you can raise your hand if you have any questions for the Commissioner. Uh, Counselor Calmucci, I see your hand raised. Counselor?
Thank you. Um, good evening, Ruth. Uh, thank you for all of the hard work that you and your team have been doing. I can't imagine how stressed and overwhelming the, the task before you over these last couple of months.
Thank you. Thank you.
Um, I, I did a, um, I did a town hall, a Zoom town hall with a, a city councillor from Brockton today, and they were talking about their numbers in, in the city. And it, it really struck me as, I, I mean, I, it struck me as how different the, the pandemic has hit their community versus our community.
Right.
Um, they have 150 deaths compared to our 80. They have 3,054 total cases compared to our 885.
Right.
What, is there any sense yet, or is it perhaps too early? Uh, but is there any sense yet as to what some communities, why some communities have been hit harder? Because I don't see us, from a population standpoint, being all that different from Brockton. It's about the same size. The housing, um, stock in terms of, um, how close people live together, apartment buildings, things like that, is pretty similar. We, we both have a high immigration population, a high immigrant population. And I'm just wondering if, um, if there's any idea yet in the public, um, health field as to why some communities in Massachusetts, I know, I think Chelsea was, was really getting slammed as well, as to why some communities have fared better. Um, and then a follow-up to that is, because I'm thinking, we have done a lot in Quincy, and we've done it early, um, in terms of getting out there and, and helping people. Uh, you know, our, our, the homeless, um, uh, depopulation at Father Bill's, I don't think, I don't think other communities were doing that at the time. And I'm just wondering if some of the actions that the administration and the city has taken, um, in the early stages are, are the reason why our numbers are low? If you could speak to any of that.
Yeah, I, I absolutely think that, um, you know, the city of Quincy, the mayor's office, the health department, um, we partnered, um, very quickly on this, and I think that made a huge difference, um, in the, in what we're seeing as far as the amount of numbers. I also think, um, you know, that we have some great community partners, um, uh, one of them being Man at Health, um, that has really stepped up to, um, taking, take over a lot of the testing, um, uh, helped with Father Bill's, uh, in setting, uh, setting up the overflow shelter. Um, we've had some, some great partnerships with a lot of different people in the city that have stepped up to the plate and really helped us quite a bit to accomplish what we, we needed to accomplish and to do it very quickly and, and in a timely manner. And I think that's, that's, um, very important when we're talking about a pandemic situation. I also think, even though, you know, population-wise and, and, um, maybe, um, ethnic-wise, we, you know, we both, both communities like Brockton and Quincy, um, are, you know, are very similar. However, I think, um, part of it is that I think you see in, in places like Brockton and Chelsea, you see a lot more people that, uh, work in the hospitality, um, business. Um, and I think that was a big portion of Chelsea's high numbers, um, people that are very, living very close together, a lot of people in a smaller area, um, that work in the hospitality business where they're more apt to come in contact with people that, um, might have COVID-19, may come in con- contact with the asymptomatic cases that we know are at least 25% of the cases that we see possibly more, um, may not have the, the best access to healthcare, um, and, um, and economically might be a little bit more depressed than, um, you know, some of our areas in Quincy. Uh, when we're seeing a lot of our cases, our nursing home cases, as well as, we have a lot of healthcare providers, um, that live in our city and, and, uh, work in Boston. So I think, I think you see a difference in the type of population and the type of access to healthcare, and I think that makes a huge difference.
Hmm, that's interesting. Okay. Um, as a follow-up question to that, too, um, the contract, the contact tracing program that you guys, um, had started pretty early on, would, was that a recommendation from CDC? Or how did the contact tracing program in Quincy come about?
So we've always, we've been doing contact tracing for the 20 years that I've been here, um, in the health department. We have a, um, a program called Maven through Department of Health and Human Services, um, that we've been on for years. Um, and we've always done contact tracing, even when, before we had this program, we did it, we got paper forms and called people in other communicable diseases. So I think that the cities and towns that you see that were already on Maven, and not everybody is, but a lot of them are, um, had a better, um, an easier time of doing contact tracing because we were, um, we were used to doing it. Um, so we've done this before. Um, obviously, this is in much larger numbers. Um, we've been able to continue to do all, all our own contact tracing. We haven't had to, um, access any help from the State Department of Public Health. Um, my office has all been cross-trained for years in doing this, so they were all able to step in, um, and do the contact tracing. We were able to get another user, um, uh, on Maven so that other people could actually document. Um, and so we have, they're like a well-oiled machine, my staff, and we have, uh, a great system of certain people, the nurses are calling new cases. We have, um, people that are calling follow-ups. We've had some great partnership with the Quincy, um, public school nurses that have come in and, um, and we have probably four nurses a day, five days a week, come in and help us. And so, um, the contact tracing, it's a lot of work because you may have one case that has 10 contacts. Um, and so you have to, you know, you have to make sure you get in touch with all of those people. Work contact is, is an important one, as you can see in the Walmart, um, situation, that if you don't get the work contact soon, um, you could, it could blow up and become a huge situation. So we've been doing that for years. We're used to doing that, and I think that's helped us out, um, in this pandemic.
Because when I look kind of in hindsight as to where we're at compared to similar, um, cities, and I think of all the things that have been put into place, the contact tracing and the, um, the, I guess, aggressiveness of our contact, uh, tracing program is something that jumps out to me as another, um, potential reason as to why our numbers are, um, the way they are, that they aren't as bad as some of the other communities that are getting really whacked by this.
Right. We've, we've also had, um, assistance from Quincy Police Department detectives, um, who, uh, when we can't find, uh, someone we're trying to trace, whether it be a case or a contact, um, usually a phone call from a police officer gets somebody's attention. Um, and so they will answer the phone, whereas if it's us, they may ignore it. Um, and so, and they've even gone and done wellness checks to make sure that, um, you know, somebody's not sitting ill, um, in a room. So, um, I think, I think combined everything that we're doing, um, and, and, and the hours that we're doing it, we're, we're here, uh, six to seven days a week doing it, um, that I think it pays off in the end.
I think, I think it does, too, and I, I just commend you and your office and, you know, the, the mayor for, for everything that's been done up until this point. Um, it's really, it's an impressive task. You have kind of gotten our hands around this as, as well as the city did and, uh, to, to keep it down as, as well as we have thus far. Fingers crossed that we can keep it up.
Yes.
Just one last question for you, Ruth. Uh, and you don't have to answer if you don't know or don't want to. Um, but, so we've talked to a lot of people, uh, just in, you know, generally, just having conversations with people. And I've come to realize that perhaps, um, the virus was being spread within the community, not just Quincy, but I mean, in general, community-based spread, um, far earlier than the first or second week of March, which is when the federal government was saying it was, uh, being spread community. I've, uh, in the community, I've heard and talked to people who have, who were sick with very similar symptoms, um, in February, mid-February. And obviously, at that point, no one was testing for, then come the first, second week of March, they still weren't testing because the DPH, um, requirements where you had to have come into contact with someone with COVID, or you had to have traveled, uh, to China, uh, recently. Uh, I know firsthand, I was sick. I had pneumonia, high fever, um, you know, 104, hallucinating. And I didn't think I had it, but I do think I had it now, and that was in the first week of March. And I, I wasn't tested at that point. So, and the reason why I ask this because as we're looking in the state and the country towards getting back to work and, and opening things back up, I wonder how many people have been infected, um, previously that may not know that they were infected because what we were hearing from the federal, uh, sources of this is that it wasn't being spread in the community during that time. Do you have any thoughts to that as to when it was in the community and, you know, what, what you're?
Sure. So, so I, I tend to agree with you on that. I think, and this is just my personal, um, you know, view from what I've seen, um, I tend to agree that it was here much earlier than the federal government even knew about or, or, um, you know, led us to believe. Um, uh, I think that there were a lot of people in the beginning that had very mild forms of this. And, and remember, when this started to come about, um, we were right in the middle of flu season, too. And so people just attributed it to, um, a, a case of the flu, whether it be a mild or, or a more serious case of the flu. So I think the timing of this coming over to us was, made it very difficult in, in, in defense of, um, you know, the federal government made it very difficult to, um, to really ascertain if it was the flu or something else because the symptoms are so much similar. But I, I agree. I think it was here. We were actually starting to see cases, um, probably mid-February when we started to see cases. But I would, I would wager money, um, that it was here much earlier than that into January, um, and that people were, um, having these, these low-grade fevers and, and coughs and, and little short, shortness of breath, um, and, and even pneumonias that may have been attributed to this and not influenza. Um, so yes, I agree with you. I think it was here much earlier, uh, than we.
And, and in a certain way, in a certain way, I mean, that's not to denigrate the, uh, federal officials. Obviously, everyone's dealing with everything for the first time. It's new, but what, what I think that, that's, uh, suggests is that more people have gone through this than what we presume. So folks who were perhaps, um, nervous about getting in the future, they may have already had it. And as we get more and more research in the coming weeks, um, there may be an immunity, um, because the antibodies have built up and, and more folks may be safer than we currently believe as we open things up. So, again, thank you very much, Ruth. I appreciate it. I'm sure my colleagues have some questions for you. I'll let, let them take over. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Next, we're going to go to Counselor Mahoney. Counselor Mahoney?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Ruth, I first want to thank you very much for all the hard work that you're doing because it, it, it's a testament to you and your department because it is 24/7 and non-stop. Um, and, you know, one of the, we've, I've been on the phone, phone with you several times. Um, so one of the questions I had, I know that the state is gonna, um, is gonna mandate wearing masks starting on Wednesday. You know, that was a big concern of people at the grocery stores and different things. I was just wondering how we anticipate that working or rolling out or, or how that might impact anything for you.
Sure. So, so prior to the, um, the governor's order, the city had put out a mask order, um, on, I believe it was April 17th, um, encouraging people to wear masks, uh, mandating store employees to wear masks. Um, and, and, um, we had those that were mu- very much in favor of it and, and some that were just the opposite. I found it, um, sometimes very difficult to, to understand why people would not, um, protect themselves and protect others. And, um, I think, um, you know, we, we struggled with, uh, getting people to, everybody to follow that. I think that the governor's order gives it a little bit more, um, teeth. Um, i- it, it does entail a fine of, um, up to $300, um, if it were to get to that point, and we do have that option. We would hope that we would never have to do that, that people would, um, take notice and, and pay attention to how important this is. Um, and I think, I think people have done better. Um, and I think people are starting to get used to it a little bit. It's, you know, it's a huge change for people. They're uncomfortable at times. Um, people are wondering where they're gonna get a mask and, you know, we want to keep reminding people, it's a face cover. Your nose and your mouth need to be covered. It doesn't, it, it shouldn't be a surgical mask. Those should be saved for, um, the N95 masks and the surgical mask should really be saved for healthcare workers who sometimes find shortages of those. So it can be anything from a scarf. You can buy a cloth mask. You can get a bandana and make a mask. And, and, um, and what I've been hearing, and I understand that with some of the seniors, that, um, if they may have manual dexterity issues, it's hard for them to make a mask and, and hard for them to get a bandana and elastics and, and they don't have, they're not, um, they're not, uh, really good with a computer, so they can't watch the video that tells them, shows them how to make a mask. Um, but anything, even a, a simple scarf, um, you know, tied, um, uh, fairly snug over your nose and your mouth will suffice for now. Just re- and we try to keep telling people, just remember that when you wear a scarf, you're, you're wearing a scarf or a face cover protects the other person, but it's not going to work unless everybody does it. Um, and so we need to do it to protect each other.
Right. And the other thing that I know that, um, when people have been getting in touch with me when there's, you know, social distancing and, and I'm sure other, other councilors are having the same issue, um, many times when people call and say, well, people aren't following the rules, I think the best way to handle that, too, is to, um, your partners with the police and the fire department, just in general, being able to remind people that, you know, 10 or more really need to be kind of, you know, separated by a certain amount.
Absolutely.
Um, I know that we, I think it was the state, too, as well as maybe the city, closed down the beaches. And I know down, and this might not be you, it might be maybe to Chris, but, um, they're having some parking issues over in those neighborhoods near the beaches, um, where people are now parking in the neighborhoods and people can't even get into their own neighborhoods. So, um, I don't know what the issue is with that, but with the warmer weather coming, it's gonna probably become a bigger problem. And I don't know how long the beaches will be closed down. Do we have any idea of that?
Um, I know, I know I spoke with, um, Chief Keenan, uh, this morning, uh, regarding the parking issues over the weekend. Um, and, and they are aware and they are making more patrols on, of all of the side streets off of Wallaston Beach because it has become a problem. Um, you know, particularly when the warm weather is here and people just want to get out and walk. But I'll defer to Mr. Walker as far as a, a timeframe on that.
Thank you.
Through you, Madam President. Yes, Counselor, we know it's, it's a somewhat limited issue. Uh, we have received a number of, uh, you know, handful of, of folks, uh, calling relative to the parking. Our response has generally been, yes, there'll be some increased patrolling, but asking folks in many of these situations to just try to be a little bit patient with some additional parking in the neighborhoods. We don't want to create a regime, uh, in some of these areas that we're not gonna abide to or, or stick to in the long run, um, understanding that when you do put up some of these restrictions in one place, it just, it sort of moves the, the problem someplace else. There's no easy solution here. If people want to go to the beach, they're gonna get to the beach, um, and do it in hopefully a safe way, which are, in observance of it, the last several weeks in the good weather days has been, yeah, folks are, are walking the beach, uh, but they're doing it in, in a safe way. Um, people do want to get outside. Um, so we have targeted some enforcement in some areas where the issue is particularly, uh, bad, uh, but those areas have been limited. Uh, and we have, when we have had conversations with some folks in the neighborhoods, asked for a little bit of patience, uh, understanding that there's gonna be a little bit of an increase in parking in some of these areas. Uh, until the state does decide to open up the parking. We have no sense on the We have no sense on the timeframe. As the governor mentioned today, the reopening plan uh that he's working on with his reopening advisory committee is expected to be made public on May 18th. I'm not sure if anything will be a go on May 18th uh as subject to that report. Um, but obviously, we're 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 taking everything we possibly can and uh working with the governor's office uh and get implemented as best we possibly can.
Okay. Um, Ruth, can I ask also, I know that you said that in the Quincy housing that we had six cases. What was the total? I know that we've had some recover. So what was the total in the Quincy housing um from the time we started reporting to today?
Um, it was, I don't have, I'm sorry, I don't have an exact number on that, but it was well over um uh 13 cases total. Um, and um we are, like I said, we are now down to um six um total throughout Quincy housing.
I just wanted to make sure that I I understood that because I knew there was a little bit more, but I know that there's been some recoveries there too. And then one other question, I know that in other communities and even um yesterday, I was out for a bike ride with my son and we were actually, you know, we saw the Boston, we were we were in Boston, we moved to Boston, but we actually saw like a Boston police officer kind of coming down the paths, reminding people to stay, you know, to keep a distance and keep your masks on. I thought that was interesting, but in the the same time, I know with the masks being mandated throughout the state, is are Quincy police officers, when they see somebody, do they have masks to hand out to people? That was something that they're doing in other communities as well. I'm just curious if that's something that we're doing as well here in Quincy.
I am not aware of masks that are available to hand out to residents. Um, I don't know if um Chris Walker um has any information on that, but I know that we don't have extra masks through the health department um to hand out to residents. I'm not sure if the police department or fire department do either.
This would be for people typically who wouldn't have them necessarily, you know, I I was just, that's something that we're trying to do.
Yeah, um, I I not at this, not at this point that I'm aware of. Um, only because um we're still utilizing the masks that we have here, and and I can only speak for the health department. Um, we're utilizing the mask we have here, that we have to give every uh patient that is a case or a contact that quarantines or isolates, we have to give them masks um and thermometers in order to monitor them. So we we hold on to our masks for that because we're not sure how many cases we're gonna have, so.
Okay. I was just wondering if that's anything that we're doing with regards to the police. And then the other question that I had, I know that when we had the last time you were here, that we were also talking to um the chief of police and the fire, chief, the fire chief, and then also Brewster ambulance. What has the emergency management department, um, Ellie, is this she's been, what is what is his part? And what what has their part been a play for in this regards to this emergency?
I can jump in there.
Okay, if you could, please. Thank you.
Sure. Through you, Madam President, um, the emergency management department, one of the biggest roles that they're playing right now is sort of the repository and deliver deliverability of of PPE across the departments. Uh, all of the PPE we're receiving either through purchase, donation, or uh we're getting from uh the state, goes through uh Director Sleman's office. Uh, he's also working directly uh with the departments on a continuity of operations plan, uh updating that, which is a big part of our emergency management response. If for some reason, let's say Commissioner Graziosi goes out uh with a pandemic-related illness, um, we have to have a plan in place to make sure that the chain of command or the DPW is followed. Um, and you could take that a couple of steps further, okay, if it's if it's the commissioner and then if it's the superintendent. And what if it gets to the level of the 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 men and women on the ground who are out doing the labor work? Um, you know, we've been working through that and making sure that we have appropriate plans in place. Uh, Director Sleman also played a major role in the depopulation effort at Father Bill's place. Uh, those are city, city equipment was used to set up in the YMCA to create that depopulation center that was uh at Director Sleman's material, his cots or our cots uh under the direction of his department that were installed in that building. Um, those are just some of the things the emergency management department's working on.
Um, it's just unfortunate because he, we haven't been able to see or hear from um that department. In this particular case, that's a new department for the city, and I I appreciate your update, Chris. I just enter, the interaction is just not something that's been right. So I appreciate you giving a a uh an outline of that. Um, the other question that I had is, and I think again, um, it plays into the the May 18th, hopefully the May 18th, um reopening and the planning. Are we, um, is the city of Quincy, are we playing a part as um of the the state, the governor's role for the his task force for that?
Yeah. Uh, I I think I've mentioned to you you folks, uh you counselors individually, uh the governor has asked the mayor to advise him uh on this in an informal role. Um, they talk multiple times a week. Uh, the governor will throw ideas off of him, the the mayor will um throw back some con- concepts or things that he's hearing on the ground. Uh, Mayor Dan Rivera from Lawrence is the is the mayor role, Eastern Massachusetts mayor representative on the actual committee. Uh, and Mayor Koch sits on multiple calls a week with uh both the Metro Mayor's Group, which is all the inner-ring communities, as well as the Mass Mayors, which is every mayor in the Commonwealth, um, and is in touch with the governor, like I said, two or three times a week. Uh, the governor knows uh where the mayor stands on on certain subjects, and we know where the governor stands uh on certain areas, and we're certainly in in lockstep with the leadership of the governor's administration.
Okay. And and I know that that's gonna be the rollout plan that comes from the state, so is Quincy um is is Quincy also um anticipating how they're gonna be able to actually make um?
Yep. Through um, you know, starting maybe, I want to say a week, maybe 10 days ago, uh internally, the mayor started to bring together his department heads uh relative to A, getting uh departments back up and running to full speed. Uh, B, what we look at when the public is ultimately allowed uh into the building. Uh, and those discussions are going on into the buildings. Um, every public-facing building, obviously, will have to do something a little bit different. Those discussions are going on right now uh internally. Uh, specifically, the the first thing that's gonna happen, obviously, is the employees will come back uh at some point in a full at a full complement. Uh, so what's going on right now are discussions with public buildings. You know, do we need, in what office scenario do we need uh added separation between employees? Uh, what sort of cubicle scenarios uh exist now that just wouldn't be amenable to uh a social distancing within the office, those sorts of things. Uh, and then further, if you take that a step further, what does the public coming back to City Hall uh look like? Do we phase that in over a course of period of time in terms of, okay, 90% of the stuff that people come into City Hall to do, it can be done online, so let's keep doing that, that 10% of 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 things, basically paying uh bills in cash if that's what people uh choose um at the treasure collectors window. Um, those are sort of the, that's the really the the big issue in terms of getting the public back in the building. Um, so do we phase that in? Uh, do appointment only in certain areas? Um, and then when we do phase that in, what does it look like? Uh, we're obviously gonna need people at the front door, uh screening people, asking people, you know, what business that uh they have at City Hall, what office they're going to, do they have an appointment? Uh, we're obviously gonna have to deal with queuing. We can't have more than, and you you all well know the tight space uh in the treasure collectors window. We can't have more than two or three people lined up and and be able to maintain a safe safe social distance. Uh, we're obviously gonna require the public uh and our public-facing employees to wear face coverings. Um, these are sorts of things, these are the discussions that are going on now. Uh, and we fully expect to be ready to go when when that time comes, but we're not making any firm commitments on dates. We have uh amped up a little bit at the mayor's direction. Uh, the public works and parks and labors, the outside work for the most part. Uh, they were running a split shift uh five days on, five days off. Uh, as of this week, that's started back up uh as everyone's working their regular shift uh in these departments on the labor side uh with a new set of protocols. Uh, safety protocols and in protocols in dealing with the public and dealing with each other. Uh, no confined spaces, no uh group work uh that, and if there is, you you have to be wearing the face covering. So it's that whole new world, um, the new normal, it it's become a little bit of a cliche. We're starting to work our way into that right now.
Okay. And then with um, just I know that this is something that they're working through with the reopening of the state. Is there um, are we gonna be also putting um things together for businesses that might be opening for restaurants or hair salons or nail salons or just in general things that are facing the public um in a different way?
Yeah, what we expect to happen is the actual regulation will come, will be a product of the governor's advisory committee. So the rules will come from on top, uh but in the end, it will be on the local cities and towns to enforce them. So that's part of the two-way conversation that's going on now. The governor wants to hear from municipalities because in the end, if we have capacity limitations or occupancy limitations in restaurants, if we do up more outdoor spacing uh in the restaurants, if we do some of these things on uh a statewide regulatory level, it's gonna be on our inspectors and and our police to to enforce these. So that's the sort of the two-way conversation going on right now. Uh, there may certainly be some things that we can do, i- as the governor has has tried to give some leeway to the cities and towns on some of these issues. Uh, there may be some things that we do differently than other places, but I think uh in the bigger picture, the actual regulations as to who can open, how they can open, when they can open, um, that's gonna be guided in in large part by the state process.
I know. I I just wanna, I I just, it's a, it's a Hercules effort that has to happen throughout the whole state. And I do think um Mr. Prime, um, Counsel Palmucci um was very well-stated in saying that the city has 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 really gone above and beyond. And there are areas, of course, that we can always improve, but it makes it difficult because it's not really within our hands. It's within the people who are not following the directions or the directive. And it's challenging, um, because as much as we want to make sure everybody's doing it, it's hard to um it's hard to convince people who are non-convincible. This is an important thing. I really do want to um to applaud and thank Ruth Jones and all of the efforts within her department. It's, it really has been very impressive with how fast they were able to reorganize and really go after this um and take care of what I think is a something that none of us could have ever predicted that we would be in the situation. Um, so I just want to make sure that she realizes how much we, that that I think her and her talented team is valued in the city. Um, and I also want to thank you, Chris, because you have been giving us all of the notifications every single day. It's, 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 it's a full-time job in and of itself. And just to get the city back in operational, I think we're all looking forward to the day that things can be back to the new normal, whatever that may be. It does impact everybody, um, but I just wanted to um thank everybody that's working so hard to keep our city safe. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Next, we're going to go to Counsel McCarthy. Counselor?
Thank you, Madam President. Hi, Ruth, how are you?
I'm good, Dave. How are you?
Good, and thank you, thank you, thank you. Um, as uh my colleagues, Counsel Mahoney and Counsel Palmucci have said, um, we have done a great job. We've been proactively on top of it in Quincy. And uh it feels like we've been doing this now for a couple of years, and it's been a couple of months. So um, uh, great job.
Thank you.
Quick question. I know you went around the horn and talked a little bit about the housing and the nursing home um complexes. What about um the regular, like the apartment houses, like 77 Adams or even some of the senior um locations like Brookdale or Town Brook? Have there been relatively, I know Town Brook had had an issue, but relatively quiet?
Um, for the most part, we've had some issues in some of the private houses, um, some of the uh assisted livings. Um, we've had some issues. Um, we've been in contact with Brookdale and 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 Town Brook. Uh, when they've, uh, their their management has been very good at um at Brookdale to contact us, ask us um uh for guidance, and there are a lot of uh different uh forms of state guidance for these different institutions. So we have been dealing them, we have had cases in in private buildings, we have had cases in um senior buildings that aren't part of Quincy Housing Authority. Um, we've had cases in and still do have cases in some of these places and in some of the assisted living. Um, and we expect to because of the um, you know, the age and the type of person that might be living in these places. As far as um, you know, just regular apartment buildings, we've had some um issues with some um apartment buildings uh that people, residents have called. And, you know, we, I'm happy to call the management and just explain to them what the complaint might be. Um, in the beginning, we we had a lot of uh dialogue with different apartment buildings and condo buildings as to what they should be doing to step up their cleaning. Um, you know, elevator buttons, railings, doorknobs, things like that, what they should be using as far as cleaning solutions. So there's been a lot of dialogue. Have we hit every building? No, I'm sure we haven't.
Right.
Um, but we try to get as much information out as we possibly can um and refer people to CDC.gov and mass.gov because there's some great um uh great guidance on both of those sites for all different types of institutions.
Right. And I assumed if we, if it wasn't mentioned that there were cases, but they weren't on the magnitude of of the of the nursing home uh level.
Right.
Uh, you know, out there, but um we do have some big complexes. And um I was just wondering, and but thank you for that answer, which uh was a good answer too. I'm glad it wasn't uh, glad it was only a few and 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 things are under control.
Right.
Um, quickly, talk a little bit um about the masks that Mrs. Mahoney just mentioned. So Wednesday's coming and and mandatory masks. Now, I just want to make sure I got this clear. People that are out running, jogging by themselves, they're wearing a mask?
They can if they choose to, but they do not have to.
Right.
Okay. Basically, the masks, um, the the order states that when you go into an essential business, uh you need to have a mask on as well as do the employees in the essential business. Um, you need to have a mask on when you are outside and cannot practice social distancing. So if you're somewhere outside walking and it's crowded and you cannot practice social distancing, then you should have a mask on.
Right. There's a little confusion as, I know all my colleagues have probably got calls and emails.
Sure.
You know, you've got people calling left and right, that people that are walking down the track that are social distancing themselves uh don't have masks on.
Right. And and they don't have to.
They also have masks on, you know, and so it's it's a little, you know, back and forth. And I just want to make sure I was clear on that myself.
Right. And one of the other things I think people need to realize too, that um there's specific guidance for children um age two and under. Um, they don't want a child to put a mask on under the age of two uh because it can be in uh inhibitive to their breathing. And there are people with certain medical conditions that masks might impede their breathing. And so there may be some people who have medical reasons that they can't wear a mask, and that's okay too. That's that's something that we expect.
Right. Okay. And um just to go back to Counsel Palmucci mentioned Father Bill's. Uh, my daughter works for Father Bill's, and I I can't say enough about um the plan of of the YMCA and the hotels that I know you were involved with with Mr. Walker and the mayor and and Father Bill's. It's worked out quite well to keep those numbers down. I can't imagine if we had not made a move, or you folks had not made a move right off the bat, what would have happened down in at Father Bill's on Broad Street. Um, the YMCA has worked out really well, and uh anybody who um had worked down there or needed some housing and couldn't go home, I know that the city helped them out uh in different locations. So we keep them healthy as they went back and forth to work on 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 particular uh at particular locations, Ruth, so.
Right.
Uh, that really um, that really was a big, a a a big uh a deal to me because uh you know, I I I get on and and drop my daughter off something every once in a while, and, you know, it's hard to get um some of the folks down there to understand about social distancing.
Right.
And the masks. And um I know it's 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 a hard thing to get across the plate that they need to do, but uh so far, so good down there. They've had a few cases, but all in all, uh nothing that was um that blew up and got serious.
Right.
Um, also, just a quick, um, and I know um the beaches were brought up. So yesterday, of course, was beautiful out down on Ward One. We had some activity. Folks wanted to be on the seawall or whatever. Um, uh, just a shout out to the Quincy Police. They they did a nice job of moving folks along politely too, knowing that everyone has been confined, um quarantined and wanted to get out. Um, as in, as the weather gets better, they'll want to get out even more, but um Quincy BD PD has been around and uh they've been doing a nice job and keeping things moving in a in a common sense approach too. Uh, so so that's a uh, that's a good thing. I I can't say enough about Chief Keenan and and his guys uh when I do make a call. Uh when I do make a call, they come down, but they do it right. They don't uh they don't turn it into a battle. They they do it real really well and um and I think uh most folks understand.
Right.
But that's all I had, Ruth. I I you know, I'm like everybody else, hoping uh you know, tomorrow's a better day. And uh thank you uh for everything you guys are doing down there and uh and everybody that's out there working. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh next, we're going to be going to Counselor Phelan. Counselor?
Thank you, thank you, Madam President. Um just just a couple of well question for you, Ruth. Are you familiar with the antibody testings? Is there any places in Quincy doing that? Or is it uh like the other testing where you have to have been, you know, you have to have been diagnosed this summer?
So so there are um a a few places doing the antibody testing. Um the the issue with the antibody testing is the State Department of Public Health um still feels that it needs to be perfected a little bit more. Um they're they're not really considered um a reliable test at this point. So we're seeing people that have gone to get the antibody testing and um come back with positive antibodies. And then we're having to um quarantine or isolate them for seven days. Um and normally, when you see an antibody testing um with something called an IgG, there there's two different things that you see in an antibody testing, an IgG and an IgM, basically. Um and the IgM usually means that um the infection is is um active. And the IgG usually means that the infection hopefully has passed and you're not infectious. So thi- this uh antibody test shows you a positive IgG. And one would think that if you get a positive antibody test that shows you have IgG, that you've been infected in the past and now you have antibodies against it. Um first of all, we don't know enough about the test. The State Department of Public Health um doesn't consider it a a reliable um test at this point. Um it does have its uses in certain um in certain realms of testing, uh depending on whether you've had a COVID nineteen before that was positive or not had one at all. It can give you some information. So it does have some use, but it's it's not the, you know, what you're hearing, I think, is we can all go get that. And if we're all IgG um positive showing antibodies, we can all, everybody can go back to work and everything's going to be fine. And that's that's not the case at this point. Um we still don't know enough about the antibody reaction in this virus. We don't know if people um if they show positive antibodies, if they are infectious or not. And as of um today, we are still um if someone comes back with a positive IgG, um that in certain instances, we are we are quarantining them for seven days. So um I think it has to be perfected a little bit more. I think it has its uses in certain uh realms of this disease. But um I don't think it's the, you know, everybody go get one and then you'll all be able to go back to work because it just doesn't work that way.
So basically, it's not ready yet?
I I don't think so. You know, we've seen it in in some instances where um where it might be useful. Um um we've used it um with some of the Father Bill's patients where it's given us some information as to whether um that person needs to be um quarantined or not. But for the general public to do it on everyone um is probably um it's probably not ready for that yet.
Okay, now I I don't know. I I've had some members of my family who've had it. I think I probably had it back in January.
Mm hmm.
Who listen to Northeast and they say that they think the virus was here in December.
Yeah.
So I got real sick and I had respiratory high fever, aches, pains, lost taste. So I almost think I had it, but uh I'll wait to see if they have it tested. Because if I did, I would like to obviously get my plasma.
Sure, sure.
Um but uh okay, that's that's my question on this. Well, Ruth, you've done a great job. Uh your people, I even remember going to a Drew Shearly dragged me to a pandemic uh two day seminar when I was the IT Director. I believe you were there and I'm watching a lot of this stuff. I never saw it four years ago or whatever become true, but
Right.
I guess it is. Kudos to your staff. And I know how hard they trained and they've been ready for this for a long time. So uh yeah, well done to your staff. I do have one question for Mr. Walker in the mayor's office. Chris?
Okay, yep.
A question on, we we touched on lightly the parking. Uh a lot of Ward Five goes along Wallaston Beach. And I think all that happened when the MDC closed is the same number of people. Because I watch walk the beach every day, it's still going to the beach. But they're parking on the side streets. And my concern is also some of the side streets are becoming clogged. And if emergency uh equipment has to get down, trouble particularly Fennel, uh West Elm, East Elm, a lot of those are the the streets I'm getting calls from. Uh on Fennel Street, people have to get uh tow trucks to get pulled out of there because they go too far in the marsh and tires thinking. And they had to be two tow trucks to tow cars away. Is there is there anything, any thought where we could do almost a a temporary no parking or limit the the amount of parking? Because I'm concerned almost from a public safety standpoint on some of these streets.
Through you, Madam President. Counselor, we're happy to have that discussion with you uh offline, uh Counselor, as to where you think something might be appropriate. As I mentioned earlier, you know, we have done some targeted enforcement in some areas with a general overriding premise that more so asking people to be patient about it. Uh understanding that there's going to be some additional parking in the neighborhoods until the parking on the beach uh opens up again. Uh because as we've talked about, Counselor, once you once you do something on one street, it just it creates a domino effect on every other street in the area. Um and the effectiveness of that may not be uh worth the 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 action, the the activity required. But there have been some specific areas where it's been a real issue. Uh and and you you hit the nail on the head, Counselor, a public safety issue, uh those sorts of things. Where we have uh done some targeted enforcement and and implemented some new rules or additional rules. Uh we're obviously happy to have that discussion uh with you on on some of those areas that that you feel are appropriate. And particularly when it comes to Fennel Street. I know we talked early on and I think the weather sort of helped us uh that the with it wasn't too much of an issue. But that that area of Fennel Street that you mentioned exactly, you were right about people just basically parking in the in the elephant grass. Um you know, there may be something we may be able to do down there to prevent that from happening.
Yeah, that was a comment. I spent a lot of day time on the phone today with different constituents and a lot of people after the weekend. I just worry that when they made made the thing where the DCI just shut the the property down, did it cut the number of people? It didn't cut a single person from the beach because they're all parking on a side streets. So I don't know with the with DCI, no, that's the governor. I would almost say, I I don't know, I don't think it's doing what it meant to do because the same number of people are still going to the beach. And all all they're doing is going down to the side streets. So I don't know. I mean, it's DCI or it's not the city. But um yeah, I'm I'm even getting stuff from state representatives who are sending it right back to me to talk to the governor about opening up the beach and maybe we'll cure it.
Through you, Madam President. I mean, this this was a discussion that we did have at the time, uh knowing full well exactly what was going to happen. Uh and sort of trying to plant the bug in DCI's ear that Wallaston Beach is a little bit different than some of the other beaches they operate. Uh it's not a Nantasket. It's not some of these other places where people are actually going parking and then going to the beach and congregating. Wallaston, as as we all well know, isn't always the place where people go to the beach to congregate. They go to the beach to hang out on the landslide, walk, run, bike, uh go to Tony's, go to the Klan Box. Um that's sort of the activity we had all historically have always seen at Wallaston, at least in the the relatively short uh near term history of the beach. So we had we had sort of pressed that a little bit, but understanding where the governor was coming from, we knew they were going to, they had to do it in a uniform way. And that's what they did. Uh and again, we've asked uh folks in some of those neighborhoods to to perhaps to some degree uh be patient with it, uh acknowledging this is a very difficult time for everybody and that the parking situation isn't an easy fix. But the flip side is, again, if we're having a major issue down there, Counselor, we're we're happy to visit with you.
All right, I'll I will have to continue offline. And I just wanted to bring it up because I know it was, I was dealing with a lot of calls today. I'm getting the list ready for you, so we'll talk to you more offline. So um thank you for your time. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Phelan. Uh Counselor Debona, you're up next. Counselor?
Thank you, Madam President, and um thank you, Ruth, and uh the administration, Chris Walker, the mayor, for all your hard work out there. Our first responders, Quincy Police, Quincy Fire and uh Brewster Ambulance. Um just a couple of comments and then I'll go into a couple of questions. Um you talked a little bit about Quincy Housing Authority. And um over the last few years since Jay Marathus has taken over, he's got a lot of grant funding and cleaned up a lot of the of the housing in the common areas. Um and I think that's attributed to um the cleaning and sanitizing of those common areas and the hallways. It's a lot easier going in those hallways. And I I think that is probably the reason, uh part of the reason why I think we're doing pretty good on the amount of cases inside the the Quincy Housing Authority, whether it be, you know, Clay Street, Martinson or Bicknell. Um uh it's been also Paul Perry um over at Crowley Court um Tenant Association. He's uh gone on the field and um got some masks for a lot of the um, you know, the the people over there. So I think he got close to three hundred. He's working on another three hundred. It was in the Patriot Ledger just recently. So kudos out to that crew. Um just ta- talking a little bit about the statistics, Ruth. And um I don't know if I heard it, but we as of May fourth, which is today, we have eighty deaths here in Quincy. Is that correct?
That's correct, Counselor.
And of the eighty deaths, how many are in the nursing homes or Quincy Rehab or senior housing? How many of that eighty is in in inside the homes, um nursing homes?
So I I would say um a good proportion. Number wise, I would have to count them up, but I would say the the brunt of those deaths are um seniors in nursing homes. Um we have had some seniors in private homes um die from coronavirus that had been in in uh inpatient in the hospital for um and and intubated for for weeks. Um but our our numbers are higher as far as deaths due to the clusters that we've seen in the nursing homes. I would say in one of the nursing homes, um we've probably had anywhere from twenty five to thirty um thirty uh I'm just trying to, I don't want to give the numbers wrong, so I'm I'm going to take that back. I don't want to just make an estimate. But I in one of the in one of the nursing homes, we have over more than a hundred cases um in one nursing home. So um the brunt of the 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 number of the deaths have been um seniors, um people in their seventies, eighties and nineties in nursing homes. Uh we have um I think only one case um that's been in their fifties. Um uh that hasn't been, we had a a nursing home case uh in their late fifties also. But one case out of the ner- out of a nursing home case that's been in their fifties. Other than that, it's been all um elderly with um comorbidities, um a good portion of them.
I mean, um my fellow Counselor Palmucci talked a little bit about Brockton and Quincy. You talked about hospitality business.
Mm hmm.
We also have a a great deal of a lot of apartments slash nursing homes. Um Quincy Rehab is is has been obviously has a lot of cases. I don't know if you're talking about them or not. But um it's good to to find the numbers where we're we're getting. You're so you're basically saying more than fifty percent of our deaths are coming out of the nursing homes?
I would say that, yes, yep.
Okay. Um secondly, you know, I go I go into mainly three stores, well, four, but it gets, you know, Dunkin' Donuts is a drive through. But it's CVS, Stop and Shop and Home Depot. And all three businesses run it a little bit differently. Home Depot has a line outside and you have to wait for a certain amount of people that come out of the out of the store to come in. And they're kind of looking at if you have masks on, but they're really. And then CVS, as soon as you're at the door, as soon as you walk in, there's somebody patrolling it. If you don't have a mask on, you can't come in. And then Stop and Shop is a little bit more looser, I guess I can say. But I went over to Braintree today, Stop and Shop, and they actually had a police officer out there at the front door. Um we talked a little offline about how do you institute and take it a step further with Wednesday's full scale state um from 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 the Governor Charlie Baker to institute a a mask only inside these stores? How do you how do you get on the enforcement side um starting Wednesday?
So so prior to this, when the governor's order first came out, um our inspectors, um our two food inspectors and one of our housing inspectors um went store to store, delivering the order, explaining the order. Um and it it takes a few days because remember, we, I mean, not all the food establishments are open, but we have over five hundred food establishments alone in the city, not um not including the essential, other essential businesses that are open. And so they were out um over the weekend and uh out again today, delivering the order, uh explaining the order, uh uh advising the stores to put a sign up, um explaining that there's some hefty fines that go along with this if um if they don't um use the guidance correctly. Um and just it it more or less saying, you know, that it's their responsibility to be able to stop people from coming in the store. And it's right in the governor's order. It says, you know, it's the store, the store has the authority to not let somebody in uh to the store if they're not wearing a mask. On top of that, it's the ultimate responsibility of that facility to make sure that their employees have the correct PPE and are wearing the correct PPE and that they have an ample supply of it. So our inspectors will be out all week um going store to store, which we have been doing anyways. Um even before the the city um instituted our um mask order on April seventeenth, um my two uh food inspectors have been out just going around checking the restaurants because uh we want to make sure that, yes, we're in the middle of a pandemic and things are different, but we also want food safety adhered to. They've also been um going around um along with Mark Follen um from um the Police Department and who works through um the City Clerk's Office to um help us with essential businesses and make sure they're doing what they should be doing. Um but we we have had a little bit of difficulty with enforcing it with some of the stores. Some of the stores are much better than other stores. Um and and I think that now that the governor has put out an order, not just the city, but the governor has put out an order that particularly has hefty fines that go along with it. It's three hundred dollar fine. Um hopefully, we'll people will pay attention more. And we will um we will have our inspectors out and and enforcing um the best we can. We can uh put a penalty on the facility for it. Um you would hate to have to fine a a citizen uh for not doing what they should be doing. And you you would hope that people would take heed and and take some responsibility with this. Um but in, you know, in the most blatant cases, um you know, the Police Department, um a state and municipal police can be um involved in this.
You were talking a little earlier about you're wearing the mask to protect other people, you know. So um just um a step further, I know our next meeting is not till May eighteenth. So I'd rather maybe kind of talk a little bit about it now and maybe Mr. Walker can chime in and and yourself and your personal viewpoint of it. Obviously, we're waiting for the numbers to kind of dip a little bit here. But let's just propose that May eighteenth is going to be, let's say, a soft opening for um uh of businesses. Because I know some states have already taken a step further and opened up some states with that soft opening. Um obviously, we're waiting for this this number to dip. Is is that correct? Is that what we're looking at? And obviously, from the state, from 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 the governor on a okay. But if it was to happen, May eighteenth, you sit, you think, right now, are we prepared to do something like that?
Through you, Miss Madam President. Uh yes, absolutely, Counselor. I but as I mentioned earlier, you know, I think the governor's intention is to deliver something on May eighteenth with maybe a limited number of 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 things that could happen on that particular date. Maybe it's golf, maybe it's it's parks, um some of those things that where it would be really turnkey to start opening up some stuff as opposed to um, you know, some of the things that are going to require a lot of work and a lot of review and a lot of uh consultation with within our own community, um you know, restaurants. Uh it's going to be one of the big ones. How do we deal with that? What are we talking about for occupancy? What are you talking about for requirements in terms of having people to wear masks? Um hair salons is another one. How do you make that operate? How many customers in a place can you have? Um I think those ones where it's Um, I think those ones where it's really going to be intensive, the kind of regulation and the kinds of guidelines that are going to be issued, that it's going to take longer than uh, here's the report, everybody, go to work. Um, I think that's going to definitely take some time, but there could very well be some things that will be ready to go right on that date when the, when the report is issued.
I, I appreciate that, uh, Mr. Walker, because I'm getting a lot of questions from the constituency about, okay, so when is the time? When, and I, I, I don't have a, a positive answer to tell them. However, I kind of, I, you know, watching this out and, and letting it ride, I'm just seeing how other states are doing things and how our governor's doing it. And we're all, we could kind of like do it, does it in stages where the schools didn't close fully and then all of a sudden it's okay, now we're going to close the schools throughout the year. And then that followed suit through, through, throughout the state. But um, in this particular situation, uh, do you think the governor is going to leave it to the towns and cities and the municipalities to make their decision on what they want to do?
I think more so than, than dates or anything tied to a specific timeframe. What the governor's planning on doing is setting the actual conditions for things to happen and not necessarily tying them to dates. So he may say a certain sector, you need to do A, B, C, D, and E for you to open safely.
Yep.
And when you can do that, and when you can show you can do that, then you can start to gradually phase in your opening. I think once we get to May 18th, which is the, the, the essential versus non-essential, the emergency stay-at-home advisory and all the emergency orders tied to it, I think and some of this is anecdotal, um, but I think what the, the game plan from the governor is going to be sort of to cast aside specific dates and s- specific schedules and just say, here's the dynamic, here's the framework, here's what you need to do, go and do it. And then we can start talking about how you, how you open up and when, when you may be able to open up.
Um, M- Mr. Walker, this is important information that you're talking about right now. I just trying to articulate that message because there's one side that says, well, the cases haven't gone down, so we really can't start opening up these places. And then the other side, it says, well, if we open too early, this wave is going to come back in September, October and come from a second cycle. Um, Ruth, do you have any information about that, by the way? Um, I know I may have talked a little bit about it last time. Do you foresee, um, with the Spanish flu, it had a, a second wave coming in? Do you, do you foresee any of that maybe happening or is that a theory? Um?
I, I think, I think that um, we are getting information that that may be something that could happen that around the fall, again, uh, when flu season is here, um, that there could be a second wave of coronavirus coming in. And then, um, you know, I heard some information this morning about, um, they think that the vaccine might be something like a yearly flu vaccine that we get every year. Um, and, and um, it will become, you know, just a, a normal thing that we do, like we do influenza. I don't think I have heard anything specific or seen any um, concrete scientific evidence that shows me there's going to be another wave, but again, this is, this is all new to us and nobody really knows about this virus, so we, we don't really know, but there, there could be, there could be.
Would, would it be a, a same strain, COVID-19, or would it be a different strain or a different, I guess? I know, just talk about this, but.
Yeah, there was e- even from the beginning of COVID-19, there was questions of whether this, um, this one particular strain that we were seeing could mutate and were there more than one strain? And, and, and is that why people were getting affected differently? Some were getting very mild and some were getting um, you know, very severe cases. And we've, we've still gotten um, no concrete information on that. I think they're still, they're still looking into it and they're still, um, you know, wondering. Um, we don't really have an answer on any of that yet.
I, I appreciate all your hard work. Mr. Walker, thank you for that information. And uh, I know every day we get new information from the governor and what's going on around the world and, and it changes. It, it, it kind of like uh, goes into a little different segment. So um, I want to thank you guys for all your hard work and uh, uh, Mr. Graciussi, I see you on there real quick. How's everything going on at DPW?
Um, through you, Madam President. Uh, we're doing fine, Counselor. Um, everyone's back to work today, all our laborers, and uh, we're moving forward. Everyone's healthy so far. Uh, we haven't had anyone come down with the virus. Um, we're very, we're being very careful. Uh, uh, employees met with Brewster Ambulance this morning. Uh, we showed them how to wear uh, PPEs properly, how to put on gloves, how to be safe. I mean, that's our main concern for our employees, not only for themselves, but how they interact with the public. So um, yeah, we're just moving forward.
And uh, Thank you. Thank you so much. I just see you on there and I, I know I talked to some of the workers and um, I wish you guys all the best, you and the first responders. Thank you. Thank you, Ruth. Thank you, um, Mr. Walker. I appreciate it. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Debona. Counselor Crowe?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, Commissioner Jones, thank you for everything that you do. You, you'd alluded to it a little bit and I was sort of thinking of it as we were discussing the procedures and actions coming out of your department as it relates to the pandemic, but also just as important to uh, to keep in mind is all the day-to-day stuff that you're still doing. Uh, what's amazed me, um, not only sort of your presence throughout this tough time, but just your ability to get back on any and all constituent issues uh, that are not even related to um, you know, the virus, for lack of a better word. So uh, you know, you're a consummate professional and I think that's a, you know, leadership begins at the top and I think that's a testament to both you and your staff. So thank you for that. Um,
Thank you.
Quite a few. And I hear a monster truck demolition derby going on outside of my door with the two boys, so please excuse me for that. Um, but one thing that, you know, I had on top of mind, uh, and it was covered was sort of the May 18th date. And to Counselor Phelan's point, I also had some more intellectual curiosity around the antibody test. And so you covered both of those things. Um, what was sort of news to me as we dialed up the meeting this evening was the whole Walmart issue. And honestly, I couldn't scribble down notes quick enough. What I'd like to do is get something out to my folks just to uh, put it on their radar, obviously in Ward 2. And a lot of folks in the area, particularly the seniors, depend on that store. Uh, so just so they're as uh, so that they can be as preemptive as possible to make uh, alternative arrangements. Did you say there was a they basically suspended operations willingly? Is that kind of?
Yes, yeah, we, we've been, I've been um, talking with them for the last few days, concerned at um, the cases, the amount of cases in the store. Um, getting calls from some employees um, concerning that. Um, and I've spoken to their um, their regional people uh, regarding it and um, they um, willingly closed the store. They volunteered to close the store uh, to do a deep cleaning, to do a disinfecting, um, and to, um, I had suggested uh, yesterday that they uh, actually it was the day before yesterday that they might want to test all of their employees um, to make sure that nobody was working um, and infectious and might be asymptomatic. Um, it's a very busy store. We have people going in and out consistently. And so I had suggested for the safety of the city that they, and for the safety of their employees, they may want to uh, do something like that. And um, they volunteered to do it today. They closed at 3:30. Um, I had um, previously spoken to Mannett Health uh, before um, this happened today, just to see if they would be uh, able to do some testing because I wasn't sure how many employees um, they had there that needed to be tested. And Mannett again, um, said they would be willing to help. Um, so they did close the store at 3:30. Um, they're going to do deep cleaning, um, and uh, uh, disinfecting tonight. The store will not reopen until all of the employees have been tested and they have enough employees test negative that they can come back in and correctly manage the store with the amount of people that they have in there. Um, the store will not reopen without the okay of the health department, so they need to be re-inspected. Um, I will get um, access to all of the um, employee results so that I um, can make sure that everybody who's in there has tested negative and, and um, is not infectious at the time.
This is protocol. This is checkpoint that we'll take.
Yes, absolutely. Unfortunately, we did have one, uh, and we found out about this late this afternoon that one of the 11 cases um, that were there, um, had passed away yesterday. And we just found that out late this af- we just confirmed that late this afternoon.
That's, that's unfortunate because as I s- as I, as we begin the meeting, I was looking out my window and I could actually see what I thought was a news helicopter hovering in that area. So
Yeah, yeah.
Said that, it kind of brought it all together, I guess.
It, it happened very quickly this afternoon, um, that they decided to close, but it's something we've been working on for um, the last week. Uh, my, my inspectors have been there every day. Um, and uh, so I, I think um, you know, it was a, a smart thing for Walmart to do, to volunteer.
So voluntary closure, call it suspension of operations indefinitely until proof can be shown that uh, we're operating at a, a, at a level of public safety.
Absolutely.
Relatively accurate, if I put that out there.
Perfectly said. Perfectly said.
Good. Thanks again, Commissioner. Again, it's uh, you hear it here consistently and we mean it. We're very grateful for everything that you're doing.
Thank you.
Uh, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Crowe. Appreciate it. Um, Counselor Harris, you're up next. Counselor?
Thank you. They, thank you, Madam President. Um, good evening, councilors, uh, um, Commissioner Jones, Ruth. Um, the numbers that are being shown in Quincy uh, is a direct result of your work and a direct result of the administration. Great job with, with how everybody's handling it. Um, uh, and it's really truly appreciated. Um, and again, Ruth, to you and your, your um, your staff, um, I know everybody appreciates it and thank you so much. Madam President, through you, I, I would like to ask um, Counsel, um, the, um, Mr. Walker question, if that's possible?
Absolutely.
Yes. Uh, Mr. Walker, are you there? I didn't, I don't know. Um, so some of the, some of the calls, because everybody else has covered some of the other issues. Um, I got a couple of calls about folks that have uh, zoning boards. I know it's, it seems like it's not an important, important thing, but to some folks who are trying to build a um, an access for uh, their parents to live with them, um, if, uh, what, what are we going to do with? Is it in the talks or in the plans of zoning board and um, Calcom, um, meetings? Have they discussed how, has anybody discussed, and obviously it should be discussed with, with this body, um, how we're going to go back to doing business that way? Because there are five ward councilors and, and um, and three uh, uh, do I have that right? No, yeah. No, there's six ward councilors. Sorry about that. I'm six. And three uh, at-large councilors that I I know are going to be asked questions about projects that come up, like I did today. And how are we going to proceed forward when this, because it's going to be important, uh, especially for our city's economy to get, get moving right when it's healthy and safe. And so how are we going to go about that? Is there, is there a group that's putting something together? Is there a committee? Is there a, you know, because I know the planning board, you know, we know about that, there's one planning board uh, session that's going to be on Zoom. Um, and we've already discussed how I feel about that, but um, is there anything in the works? Is there anything being discussed? Cause um, there are a lot of folks, the weather's getting better. They want to, they want to do the projects that they had planned.
Through you, Madam President. Yeah, yes, Counselor. Um, that is part of the, the mayor's reopening uh, team. Uh, the process that, that's happening right now. Uh, there's been some meetings. Uh, there's going to be more on how we figure out, and you mentioned it exactly, how do you have a public meeting where you need to have public testimony in an environment that we're living in right now? And we are starting to kick around some ideas on how we do that. Um, you know, it, it, do we do uh, teleconference public hearings? I don't think that that's a, a, an option that most people would want to have. Um, so that's definitely a part of the planning process that's going on right now. We expect to have uh, something ready for some feedback within a week or two. Uh, and then we can go from there.
Um, oh, I, I appreciate that, Chris. Uh, um, that's, that's good to hear. Um, and then one other thing, you know, we, I'm getting some phone calls. Obviously, you, you see the, I'd rather have the photo that's up there when I'm a little younger, um, rather than my um, my bald head, which it would be shining like yours and no one would see anything. But um, uh, the question is, is about the graduations. I mean, uh, it's a once-in-a-lifetime. I know uh, it's something that some, the fo- the folks that have called me, approached me, uh, uh, they, they come to us, they, they come to the, uh, the councilors, whether it's the ward councilors or the, or the, or the uh, at-large councilors, what are we going to do? I, I'd like to see some, I know it's a school committee probably situation and uh, and the superintendent, but it would be great if we were able to be um, at least know what's going on. Uh, I know some of the, there's a, there was a lot of rumors out there. There was a lot of mis- misinterpreted, I believe, a misinterpreted text message out to the students. Um, I'd really like to see us be involved because folks call us sometimes before calling constituent services and they call us before calling. And my ward doesn't actually have a school committee person from Ward. We don't have a school committee person from Ward 6. So, you know, uh, I, it would be nice, you know, and I'm not, and that's nothing against the school committee. They're all fine. They're doing a great job, but um, the communication right now, I, I know that I feel like, um, a couple of things. I've been blindsided, not purposely, but I think it was done because of the situation of what we're in. And I don't want to um, lessen the fact that this is a serious time. But um, I truly uh, would hope that we could be more, um, well, more, more than just the daily uh, here's the numbers. Okay, now it should be here's the numbers and here we are going, moving forward. And um, kind of wondering what your thoughts are on that.
Thank, thank you, Counselor. Through you, Madam President. I, I fully understand, Counselor. Um, and I'm, and I'm happy to ask the question relative to the graduation because it, it seemed to be that there was some uh, confusion over the school committee's meeting last week. I certainly can't speak for the school committee uh, as a whole. I could speak for the mayor. Uh, and his interpretation of what was said during the meeting and what the, the game plan was coming out of that meeting. Um, his recollection was that the only thing was discussed at that meeting was doing some sort of virtual ceremony on the actual graduation dates uh, relative to June 7th and June 8th. And the committee did not speak to anything beyond that. And with the game plan being that there would be no decision beyond June 7th and June 8th at this point, that it's the school committee's intention, uh, every intention to have an in-person graduation ceremony for both schools at some point during the summer, obviously with the giant caveat, if, if it's safe to do so. Um, but from talking to the mayor, because a- as you were, we were sort of, um, inundated is a little strong, but we definitely got a couple, uh, a, a number of messages the following day relative to the perception being that graduations had been canceled. They were going to do nothing else but this virtual ceremony. Uh, in the one conversation I had with the mayor, he just sort of said, no, that they just talked about June 7th and June 8th and they left everything else on the table. So that's the game plan going forward is that everything remains on the table, including having something at the stadium. And the mayor said in one of his updates last week that, look, we have a big stadium. We can potentially figure out a way to do the graduations at the stadium some point, at some point later in the summer in a way that's safe. Um, and so those doors are all being kept open, open. Uh, certainly it was unfortunate that uh, through, I don't think anyone's fault. I think that, that just the perception was that what the committee discussed or what certain people at the committee meeting discussed relative to June 7th and June 8th was sort of viewed as the end-all and be-all for our class of 2020, and that's just not the case.
Well, I, I truly, I appreciate the, that. And that's good news, Chris. That's good news for, for the parents. It's uh, uh, not, whether or not it come, we, we can actually pull it off, understandable. We don't know what's taking place. Um, and I think some of the things that were spoken to tonight, uh, I think we're still waiting to see what happens in Florida, Georgia and and now, and um, in California. Um, the last thing we want to do too is open up, uh, and have a spike. Um, it come back. We open everything up and then there's a, everybody has um, their uh, ha- we have to close down again. That would be a disaster on top of a disaster. But um, I, I want to thank you for your answers, Ruth. Again, thank you, folks. And um, and uh, again, everybody at home, please uh, continue to. And again, everybody at home, please continue to be safe. And thank you. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. That's all I have. Thanks. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, Counselor Harris. We're going to go back to Council Mahoney, who has a follow-up question. Counselor?
Thank you very much, Madam President. Chris, this is, I'm just going to follow up now. I was going to do this during communication because it is about the high school graduation. And I know that the school committee will be meeting about this tomorrow night as well. And it's very unfortunate that the letter from North Quincy High School came out because it really did put people in a tailspin. When I do know that everybody's suffering during this pandemic and high school seniors are you know, they're missing out on a lot of things that are happening. And I happen to be a parent of a high school senior. I try not to talk about my kids and what they're going through. But it's very difficult to have a year in closure like this. It's different than anybody's ever had. And the letter that they got last week really did put both parents and students into a tailspin. And, you know, I was happy to see that the superintendent, the administration came out with another letter on Friday saying that the virtual graduation wasn't going to be the end-all, be-all, but there'll be something in July. But other communities, Brockton and Abington and Weymouth and Rockland, they have put dates in the calendar. Some of them have postponed any ceremony to later in the summer and to July and even the first week of August. I think one of the concerns that families are having, and this is just timing, and it is something that we need to wrap our arms around, is that the superintendent is also going to be moving on. And the fear is that when he's gone, maybe that there won't be follow-up for that. So it's really important that we all work together, the school committee, the administration, even the council, to make sure that we're able to provide, you know, some closure for these kids. Because it's just, it's an important transformation for them. Many of them will go off to college, but some of them won't, and this will be the only time that there'll be that celebration for them. And I know the city of Quincy will do it right. So I do have faith that we'll be able to do something. It was just the lack of creativity in the letter that came out that really kind of made people very upset. But I was thankful that there was something else that came out on that Friday to see that we're going to be putting our best foot forward for these kids. So I'm hoping that there'll be some dates, maybe some that we can put some hope in for these kids to move forward. Maybe later on this week, we'll be able to do that. I don't know if you have any more information about that, but I do know that that is where families were coming from. It's not, it's more about, it's about celebrating in the best way that we can during this pandemic. Thanks.
Through you, Madam President. Sorry, no, I can't really add anything beyond what I already said, just because of the school committee function.
No, I understand. I just wanted everybody to know that the school committee will be meeting tomorrow night. I did reach out to them and they have this on their agenda for tomorrow night. And again, just, this is another situation where the mayor and the superintendent came together last Friday to say that they're going to be working towards something. And I do know that the parents and the families that got in touch with me are expecting those dates to come and that they're hoping that this isn't just, you know, pushing off the inevitable. But we do want something to happen for those kids. If there's a way we can do it, I know that the city will make it happen for them. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Okay, so I just want to, before we let Commissioner Jones go, does anybody else have any other questions for her? Let me just scroll through here. Okay, with that, Commissioner, I actually have one question for you, but I have, I'm going to start with Mr. Walker, if that's okay. So on the, Mr. Walker, when Counselor Phelan was talking about the enforcement over at Quincy Shore Drive, I just wanted to do a follow-up. I know my ward counselor, my colleague, Bill Harris, has been following up with this as well. But the Swanum Point Park parking lot seems to be overflowing as well now because people aren't able to park along Quincy Shore Drive anymore. And so when you're doing the follow-up with Counselor Phelan and then subsequently with DCR, you could also just mention to them that now we're starting to see a migration of people going over to Swanum Point Park. That would be really helpful. And to the high school graduation part of it, I would also just ask, you know, I have a niece graduating this year, and I know I feel, I feel really good about the fact that between all of you guys on the council, you know, there's nine of us that I know will also be advocating to try to do something special for all of our seniors. But if we can also, you know, explore what we can do, if anything at all, to help support the high school seniors and the prom that they're missing out on, I've also been getting some questions about that as well. I know graduation is seeming to take precedent over a lot of those questions that are coming in, but that does not mean that there aren't questions about prom coming in as well. So I don't know if that is also being discussed or if the focus is solely on graduation right now.
Through you, Madam President. I can't answer that. Again, I can't get into the conversations that are happening at the school level. It's not my wheelhouse.
Okay. All right. Well, I thought I'd put it out there, but I think it'll be helpful again just to know that, you know, there's nine counselors here who will be able to make sure that we're following up and advocating for those. And Commissioner, to you, so I wanted to extend my gratitude to you specifically because of that case over at Walmart. I did get a really upsetting call from some family members who knew, unfortunately, that person who had contracted COVID-19 at Walmart and subsequently passed away. And to know that you and your department were on top of it already, you know, proactively getting to that store and letting, you know, basically, to that, I'll order a call here, and this is an issue. And to hear now that they have shut down, that's, you know, music to my ears to know that they're no longer operating right now because they obviously, you know, weren't staying on top of this. But to that end, you know, what can we and other residents in this city do if and when we do go into a store and we're starting to see some of these alarming things? I mean, is there that direct line to your office that we should be calling to report these things? Or, you know, I just don't want people to inundate, you know, the police department necessarily, but are they the right ones to call? So like, what would you recommend is a good step for people who are out in areas like this, who maybe see things that are alarming?
Right. I think that people should be calling the health department. And if we fail, it's a matter that the police department would need to get in touch, you know, in contact with the people at the stores or the residents going into the stores, that we could contact them. But oftentimes, if you call the health department, we can call the store manager. We can send one of our inspectors down to look at the situation and see what's happening. And we can oftentimes take care of it prior to calling the police in on the situation. Again, you don't want people calling 911 and inundating that, you know, that line with with this type of issue where it might be able to be taken care of by the health department. So they can, they can call my line at 617-376-1272. We're here six or seven days a week, and if I'm not here, my phone, my office phone is transferred over to my cell phone. So I can be reached pretty much 24/7.
I appreciate that, Commissioner. I know that, again, you and your team have been nonstop 24/7, even just a week ago when you had done a translated update and Q and A session at one of the senior homes. I mean, again, I cannot thank you and your team enough. It just is, you know, a really, really challenging time for a number of reasons that people are going through this right now. And really, again, to know that you are on this 24/7, I know it's a lot for you and your team. But I just hope you know that, you know, that we are extremely and will be forever grateful to you for this work. So Commissioner, if no one has any other questions for her, I do want to let her get back to it and get back to work. If there are any other hands. Okay, Commissioner, thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Okay, Madam Clerk, next item on the agenda, please.
Item number two, 2020-079, in order amending Rule Four, leave a voice in rising votes for traffic.
Wait the reading.
Thank you. Okay, motion to wait the reading. Counselor Paimucci?
I move approval of the order as presented in the minutes. Happy to take any questions on it, and anybody has, I think the supporting data that Jen thankfully sent out for me to you guys shows that Robert Rules of Order allows this. In addition, well, primarily, I think it's, the reason I was doing this is because I think it's it's odd that we vote in a roll call vote for things such as that, whereas in major financial matters, we do a voice vote. It elevates it to a certain height that I don't think it necessarily warrants. But more than that, I think it's confusing to the at-home viewer who is unsure about what we're voting on. And I think the process could be a little bit cleaner for the council, and that's why I put it in. So I don't know what folks think about it, but I move approval.
Okay, so motion to approve by Counselor Paimucci. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Phelan. Okay, are there any questions on this item? Counsel McCarthy?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Through you to Counselor Paimucci. I just, Brian, examples, just when we go through the ordinances when we're approving handicap parking, things of that nature, is that all you're targeting?
Yeah, there's stuff that we usually do out of the ordinance committee meeting. Ordinance committee at the end of the meeting, like stop signs and handicap parking spaces, yeah.
Gotcha.
Rather than taking a roll call, we'll just do a voice vote.
Okay. No, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other questions? Counsel Phelan?
Just a comment. Years ago, this is how we did a lot of the traffics. So I think something changed somewhere, and I think I commend Counsel Paimucci for bringing it in and helping streamline the process.
Great. Thank you, Counsel Phelan. Okay. With that, so we have a motion to approve by Counsel Paimucci, seconded by Counsel Phelan. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Counsel Kane?
Yes.
Counsel Pearl?
Yes.
Counsel Debona?
Yes.
Counsel Harris?
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney?
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy? Counsel Paimucci?
Yes.
Counsel Phelan?
Yes.
President Liang?
Yes.
Nine members.
Thank you.
Can we just point out the irony that you took a roll call vote on that?
All right, let's move it along. Next item on the agenda?
Number three, 2020-080, order amending Rule Four, be a voice in rising votes, nominations and elections.
Wait the reading, if I may, Madam President.
Please, Counselor.
Yeah. So this is, this was just another, when I was working on that one, it occurred to me that this is something else that could be cleaned up in the way we vote, and I might as well do them both. This specifically would go towards, I think it's only two votes that we get that we do like this on a regular basis. It's the Housing Authority Appointees and the Park Board Appointees. And everyone's been here for long enough to know that when we take those votes, we have to say the person's name, which again is kind of awkward if you didn't want to vote for the person or if they were. We luckily, I mean, I've been here 10 years. I've never seen where there's been a contested race. So you would have to say one of the names when there's two put into nomination. But that could be, I think, confusing. It's just to streamline it. So this way, you would go through the votes, kind of like we go, kind of like we do the vote for council president. Somebody puts the name into nomination, somebody seconds it, then seeing no other nominations, they close the nomination process, and then people vote on that person. So I think that's the normal way to do a vote, to handle a vote like that. So I'm just trying to streamline the process. Arguably, arguably, this would streamline the process if the mayor were to vacate his office and the city council were to, this is what the charter says. A lot of people think it's the council president that automatically takes over if the mayor vacates the office. But that's only, the office is only temporarily. The mayor permanently vacates the office or is unable to serve. There is an election among the city, among the sitting city councilors to elect one of themselves to be the interim mayor. So this would be, you know, helpful in that situation too, that we hope it doesn't happen, Chris. We hope it doesn't happen. So I move approval.
Okay, motion to approve by Counselor Paimucci. Do we have a second?
A second.
A second.
Counselor, sorry, seconded by Counsel Phelan. Are there any questions on this order? Okay, seeing none. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Counsel Kane?
Yes.
Counsel Pearl?
Yes.
Counsel Debona?
Yes.
Counsel Harris?
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney?
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
Counsel Paimucci?
Yes.
Counsel Phelan?
Yes.
President Liang?
Yes.
Nine members.
Okay. Motion passes. Thank you, Counselor. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk?
Next item is number three, 2020- oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. Number four, 2020-081, resolve calling the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to permit voting by mail in all future elections.
Counsel Paimucci?
Yes, I would move approval of this resolution. Again, resolution is an expression of the will of the body. I think it's important just to weigh in on this. It's a debate currently happening on Beacon Hill. I know the Secretary of State is in favor of doing something. I think the legislature, the bulk of the legislature is in favor of doing something. It's just working out what to do. I made this resolution to be very bland on purpose, without a lot of wherazas, because I tried to avoid any type of politicization of this or partisan, partisanship of it, because I just think it's a fundamental issue of people being able to vote. We're in a situation, as we stand today, where elections would not be able to happen in the city of Quincy safely, as of today. I mean, they wouldn't, right? So I think this is something that needs to be done. It needs to be done quicker. And I'm hoping that if enough communities like ours, the towns and cities weigh in, that that'll help push the legislature and the Secretary of State into working out the details of making this a reality in the short term. Not only do I think, fundamentally, I think it's a good idea, whether there is a pandemic or not, to allow vote by mail. I think it incorporates more people in the process. You're going to get a higher turnout. I think the issues about fraud can be overcome and prevented. So I think it's a good idea, but certainly in this time of crisis, I think it's a necessity. I mean, everyone saw what happened in Wisconsin when they voted a couple of weeks ago. I mean, I can't imagine standing six feet apart, wrapped around, you know, I voted up at the Yalks, wrapped all the way down Quarry Street, waiting to vote for hours and hours. It just, it boggles my mind. So I wouldn't want that to happen in Quincy. So what this does is just asks that the, it just says that the city council supports voting by mail and calls on the state to implement it. And I would remind you, it's 120 days to our next, to our next election, which is the primaries for, I guess it's for statewide offices and federal offices. So there's an important election coming up with a lot at stake. So, yeah, I move approval.
Thank you, Counselor. So a motion to approve. Do we have a second? Okay, I'd actually like to second that then.
On the motion?
Yes, Counsel Kane?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm not going to be supporting this. This is, it's vague. I think this requires considerable debate. And, you know, while I appreciate in concept, something being put forward, I think that this is something that we should be debating a little more wholeheartedly than just a one-line resolution. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Does anybody else have any other questions on this? Counsel McCarthy?
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I'm going to also not support it. I agree with Counsel Kane. I understand everything that Counsel Paimucci had said. To me, it's a little quick. If this was probably called for a mailing election in the case of a crisis, you know, and then we go back to the way we've always done it, if we didn't have a crisis, I think there's a few things to kick around. I think it's a great thought, but I need a little bit more time myself. So I'm going to be voting no.
Great. Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Harris?
Thank you, Madam President, and I respect everybody's opinion on this. You're going to hear, you're not going to hear an abstain or a yes or a no. There'll be, I'm not going to vote on this because I'm still not sure whether or not I'm allowed to with my position. And so I don't want anybody to misinterpret my silence during the vote. But thank you to the folks who gave their opinions, and that's what it's all about. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Phelan, is that your hand up?
Yes, I'm going to support the resolution. I feel that we were lucky enough to get our primary election off in March and having worked on several elections, several different elections. I'm just, you know, Nikki, it's going to be on you, but there's a lot going on here. And this is a resolve and all this is doing the same thing. I'd like to see something. I think what's going to happen is they're going to have to figure out something. So us just weighing in that we're looking for other options, I don't think is going to cause anything. So I'm going to support the resolve. I think it's I think it's, we're living in a new reality. What happens in November 3rd? If all of a sudden you get a, you get a second wave of this and you're sitting there in a second wave and you're trying to get an election. And to do these elections, you can't just flip a switch and do it tomorrow. It might even be too late to do voting by mail because of all the ballots, the way you gotta print them out, mailing them out, there's a lot to it. And I get that. And I think I'm going with the spirit of the resolve, which is saying that we need to look at something. Because the days of lining people up, the way we've done it at these elections, it's not gonna work if we're in a pandemic. So I'm gonna just, I'm gonna support Counsel Pemmucci on this. I understand the spirit of the law. I also understand that people think a lot needs to be happened. But what's gonna happen is gonna come from the state legislature and up in the state office. So I'm gonna support his resolve. I think it's timely and realizing that you can't do it. You know, you can't say in October, we want to do mailing by mail. It won't work. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Mahoney, I believe I saw your hand go up as well.
Yep, so I just wanted to say that I'm gonna, I'm gonna be voting yes for this as well. I do think that there's some parameters that will have to be put on, but I don't think that's something the city of Quincy will be doing. I think that's at the state level. But I do think that we're in a situation where, you know, many people who will want to be able to cast that vote may not be able to do it because of health concerns and restrictions that we're all under right now. So one of my concerns is that if we don't go ahead with something like this, it might be restricting people from being able to actually cast that vote. And if we are too late for maybe the primaries in September, hopefully we're not too late for November if there is to be a second wave. So I do understand that people's concerns and it should be an open debate in that particular case. But I also believe that, that it, you know, being able to come forward and actually start that conversation, it might change the way that Nikki does her job. But right now, there's absentee ballots that do get sent in. And I see it more as that, that type of thing where you'll be able to validate those voters who are coming in through the absentee ballots in the same way that you do currently to make sure that they're being checked off of the database list that they have voted. It's, it's not the same. I realize it's different. But we are in different times right now. And we do have to take into consideration, we have big elections that are coming up that are gonna impact how we move forward as a, as a community and as a state and as a federal government. So I will be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Okay, so does anybody else have any other questions or comments on this item? Okay, Counsel, I do want to just say before we go to a vote that I do appreciate you bringing this up right now. I think that, you know, with this pandemic, there are already glaring inequities that people are facing with, you know, access to decent internet connections. I know I've, you know, in this meeting alone, have cut in and out a couple of times. And I'm just trying to have a meeting, not even, you know, with three, four other kids trying to, you know, talk to their teachers and get homework done. And, you know, that's even if they have a computer or tablet to get on, you know. And you throw on top of that the stores that are open right now, again, with essential workers and the people that are at risk because they are out at this time, you know, and the first responders and people in like the health department who are going out doing this work. I mean, they're all getting put at risk when you are creating more opportunities for them to have to be out in public to do something and to engage, and particularly with something so important like this. You know, I'm hoping that by September, this will all be a distant memory. But should it not be, I don't want to ever look back on this and think I didn't do what I could to protect this important process while also protecting the health and safety for everyone. I mean, you look and see what happened with voting out in Wisconsin. And, you know, even though this resolve doesn't make it happen, it certainly does show a support to that effort. And so I do want to just, again, commend and thank you for allowing us this opportunity to support this. So with that, Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll?
Counsel Kane.
No.
Counsel Crowe.
Yes.
Counsel Debona.
Yes.
Counsel Harris. Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy. Counsel Pemmucci.
Yes.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President Liang.
Yes.
Six members.
Okay, item passes. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, please?
Could I just ask, Madam Clerk, if you could send that to the state delegation and to the Secretary of State's office?
You bet.
Thank you.
Okay, actually, I think that was the last item on the agenda. So with that, if we could have approval of previous meeting minutes from our last meeting? Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Thank you, Counsel Phelan. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Counsel McCarthy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next, we've got our communications and reports from the mayor, other city officers and city boards. I'm just gonna scroll through here to see if they're raising their hand. Okay, seeing none. Uncommitted business and preceding meeting. Right, reports of committees? Do we have any reports from any committees?
I have ordinance.
Oh, Counsel Mahoney?
So we have some ordinances that need to be passed. I'm not sure we'll be voting, we'll be voting roll call or we'll be saying, we'll be saying aye on this. This is my only question.
It passed, so you will be voting aye.
That's a great question. I'm going to confirm with the clerk.
Yes, I would say an aye vote is.
Madam Clerk, could you just repeat that? I apologize.
An aye vote is.
Great.
Excellent. All right, so we have order number 2020075, to add no parking on the southwest side of Edward Street, Washington Street to Union Street. We have a motion to pass.
Okay, motion to approve by Counsel Mahoney. Do we have a second?
Second. Second.
Thank you, Counsel Pemmucci. All those in favor?
Aye.
2020077, parking on the southwest side of Edward Street, Union Street to 185 southwest of Union Street. Positive recommendation.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and we have 2020077, add no parking on southwest side of Edward Street, 315 southeast of Union Street to 640 southeast of Union Street. Positive recommendation.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
And this is our last one, 2020-078, add no parking on the northeast side of Edward Street, 185 southeast of Union Street to 315 southeast of Union Street. Move positive recommendation.
Second.
Okay, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Madam President?
Yes, Counsel Phelan?
Through you to the chairman of the ordinance committee. 20267, would that be ready to be passed? It's for no parking north side of Kempa Street and El Mal. I thought that, I thought we had passed that the last time, but I'm still seeing it on the calendar.
I'd have to check to see if it was posted. It wasn't on this list for this week.
Okay. They've been looking for two-hour parking and no parking on one side. So something that a neighborhood has been looking for for a couple of months now. So I'll pass that tonight and I would finalize it.
It's not on the list. It has to be advertised, so I'll have to follow up on that.
All right.
It passed at the previous meeting.
It passed at the previous meeting.
I'll confirm with T-PAL that they got it.
Okay, thank you. All right, I thought we had, but I saw it again, so.
Thank you. Counsel Mahoney, do you have any others?
Nope, that was it. That was the list I got.
Thank you. Do we have any other reports from any other committees? Let me just do a quick scroll. No? Okay, great. Presentations of petitions, memorials and remonstrance? Okay, seeing none. I would just ask you all again to just keep the family of that Walmart worker who unfortunately had passed away to coronavirus in their thoughts and prayers. It was incredibly quick and jarring when the news had come in to the folks in my family who knew her. And I would just, again, ask that all of you keep her, as well as honestly, all of her coworkers who tested positive for it and your thoughts. So I appreciate that. Thank you. Okay, any motions and orders or resolutions? Okay, seeing none. Scheduling of committee meetings and public hearings. All right, so as a reminder, our next meeting is going to be, again, virtually on Monday, May 18th. If anything changes, of course, we will make sure to communicate that and let folks know. But other than that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Counselor. Everyone be safe. Have a good night.
Be safe, everyone. Take care.
Thank you.